What's this item on the ballot about, on the agenda about women's right of choice?
The time is 10 minutes after 10 and Mrs. Flores and Mrs. Picas and I are waiting for seven other councilmen to join us. Would the council persons in the building please come to the council chamber?
Mr. President and members of the council, you see Canoga Park High School's finest arrayed around me and I'm very, very proud to be here and to introduce you to them. Again, Canoga Park High School cheerleaders have won the national cheerleading championships and we are, I am so proud of them and what they have achieved. They've been here before, as you know, because year after year after year they have won the state championships and they're the only team to ever win them back-to-back. And this year at the national championships, Canoga Park is number one. So I'm really proud to be one of them with my jacket which is not new, I have had it for a while and I'm pleased to be wearing it and so pleased to have them here. Standing next to me is Larry Higgins, the principal of Canoga Park High School and there is Carolyn Perkey who has been the coach and the guide for the cheerleaders for many, many years and really the key to their success because her energy and her talent and her ability and her persistence has encouraged these young people for many years to do their very, very best. They've always done their best and they've always achieved superbly. So I'm not going to talk a whole lot, you know, these are days when, when young people aren't always held in the highest regard. So when we have something to celebrate with bright, well-adjusted, good performing, good students who are successful, then we really want to celebrate the fact that they are terrific and that they do so well and that they do succeed. And I know that these are academically talented young people as well. So I have a beautiful plaque to the national champions of the Canoga Park High School cheerleaders for their success. And I don't know whether to give it to you Larry or to your captain or to Carolyn or to whom, but I know that this will look wonderful on the office wall at Canoga Park High School and that you'll have it to commemorate the significance of your victory for many, many, many years. So to each of you, to Carolyn and to Larry and to each and every one of you, I congratulate you. And they, there will be a brief performance right now by these talented young people. Let me also thank, there's some parents who are here who helped to drive them down and I'm so glad parents that you've joined with us today. So let's hear it for Canoga Park High School!
Thank you, Mrs. Picas. The time is now 10:25 and council still lacks a quorum.
Okay, the kids are going to perform now, Mr. Browdy, so the members of the council surely want to get in here and watch this performance.
You gotta be skinny and you gotta be strong. Would council persons, Galanter and Wax, please come to the council chamber? Council still lacks a quorum.
...
What? No, I don't think that's true. But look in discuss this. I understand. Yeah, you've already discussed on one other. Qualerole, Mr. Clerk.
Alatori, Bernardi, Burnson, Browdy, Flores, Galanter, Hernandez, Holden, Picas, Rilly, Thomas, Wax, Walters, Wu, Yaroslavsky, Farraro. Ten members present in the quorum, Mr. President.
First item.
Approval of the minutes.
Record a unanimous vote. Next item.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Without objection, unanimous vote on those resolutions. Next item.
On the supplemental agenda, item number 33 is a communication from the Housing Preservation and Production Department relative to a permanent gap loan of $950,000 to the Korean Youth Center.
This requires 10 votes for consideration. Open the roll on consideration. Close the roll.
Eleven eyes.
That was approved. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment on item number 33? I see no one. The public hearing is therefore closed. Members of the council, is there any discussion on item number 33? If not, open the roll. Close the roll.
Eleven eyes.
That item was approved. Next item.
Okay, so we adopted the Community Development and Housing Committee report that had been submitted. On the regular agenda, item number one is a public hearing. It's a categorical exemption and conditional use appeal in Council District III.
Is there any one in the audience who wishes to speak on this item?
Okay, the applicant consents to a continuance to July 29, 1992.
All right. Mrs. Picas, is that agreeable?
I didn't hear.
A request for a continuation on item number one.
Yes, that's fine. That's fine.
Open the roll on the continuance. Close the roll.
Twelve eyes.
That was approved. Next item.
Item number two is a public hearing. It's a Planning and Land Use Management Committee report mitigated negative declaration and resolution relative to open space zone changes and plan amendments as part of the general plan zoning consistency program.
All right. Mr. Bernson?
Continue this one week.
All right, is there any objection to the continuance of one week on this item? If not, record a unanimous vote. Next item.
Item number three is a public hearing. It's a Planning and Land Use Management Committee report relative to the Westwood Design Review Board appeal regarding construction of a condo project in Council District Five.
All right, Mr. Yaroslavsky or Mr. Bernson? We'll call that number three special.
Is there a reason you want to call it special?
Need to discuss the amendment to it.
Yes.
What does your amendment do, Zev? I haven't had a chance.
It provides additional findings in consultation with the staff.
Doesn't change the committee report?
No, not at all. Mr. President, I would move a three-minute public hearing on each side. There was already a hearing at the committee and I would move a three-minute public hearing on each side.
Open the roll on the public hearing.
Ray, Alatori's here.
Three minutes on each side. Close the roll.
Thirteen eyes.
That was approved. Do the sides have particular people that they want to speak for the three minutes? If not, I'll just call the names as they appear. Let's see, against are... I'll call the ones for against first. John Bowman?
Mr. Chair, there are only two of us speaking in support of the project, which is John Bowman and Ben Resnick. So can we arrange our presentation?
Just proceed.
Thank you. Good morning, my name is Ben Resnick with the law firm of Resnick and Resnick representing the property owner and the applicant. What we have before you today, ladies and gentlemen of the council, is a project that's here for design approval, almost three years into the process. I would like to tell you that we're here under the Westwood Community Plan Design Review Board ordinance, which you passed and became effective about almost four years ago, yet to this very date, you do not have legal design guidelines in place. So I find it very ironic as to how a council can make a decision on design guidelines without them in place. Section 10 of your ordinance specifically required the guidelines to be presented, and I quote, "The guidelines shall not become effective until they are approved by the City Planning Commission," end quote. That's in your ordinance. The City Planning Commission never received the guidelines from the Design Review Board in Westwood. They never acted on them. There are no legal guidelines in effect. Therefore, we've got a problem here and that is that we cannot meet a criteria that does not exist. So our client has gone through seven Design Review Board hearings, came up with a best project, which is here for your review, if you'd like to see the rendering, and is still being denied after nearly three years in the process. If you think that's due process, then something is wrong here. Secondly, you will hear that there are some technical objections to the project. There are some technical deficiencies. The design review process is not intended to be a building and safety plan check. Let's not confuse that. This project will comply with all of the height restrictions and number of stories and side yards, because that's what building and safety is supposed to do, not the Design Review Board. Yet what we've had here is the imposition of these kinds of conditions by the Design Review Board saying, "Oh no, you've got too many stories" or "The side yards are wrong." That will be addressed at building and safety. No permit will issue unless our client has a six-story building. And that's what it will be, because that's what's permitted. Three years in the process is too long. The Director of Planning approved the project. The Planning Commission approved this project. It is time that the council let a building go through here on Wilshire Boulevard. The design is here if you care to see it. Thank you. And Mr. Chair, if we may just have another minute for Mr. Bowman.
Good morning, members of the city council. My name is John Bowman with Resnick and Resnick, speaking for Primaco 12 Partnership, the owner of this property. I've personally been involved in this design review process for this project going on almost four years now. And I can tell you from that experience that this project, I think, would make an interesting case study of exactly what is wrong with the design review process in the city of Los Angeles. This project was reviewed at no less than seven meetings before the Westwood Design Review Board over a nine-month period. And at each step of the way, our client's architect made changes to the project to reflect the specific recommendations of members of the DRB.
The time has expired.
Let me wrap up. We had made numerous changes. Thank you.
All right, those now who are for, Sandy Brown.
Sandy Brown, member of Homby Westwood Property Owners. I'm here to support the appeal. We agree with the Plum Committee and we urge the council to go along with the community and Councilman Yaroslavsky in supporting the appeal. Thank you.
Laura Lake.
Laura Lake for Friends of Westwood. We support this appeal. We appreciate Councilman Yaroslavsky supporting the design review process. This project violates the aesthetic criteria used by the Design Review Board, but also the Wilshire Scenic Corridor plan, which has a height and width and side yard requirements. So the Design Review Board does have to look at whether the building is supposed to be six or seven stories. It makes a lot of sense. Thank you.
Jackie Friedman.
Represent the Homby Westwood Homeowners Association. We're in support of Councilman Yaroslavsky's support of this appeal and if building and safety is indicating now it's seven stories, we are definitely in support of this appeal. Thank you.
Now that completes the cards on both sides. I'll declare the public hearing closed. Chair recognizes Councilman Yaroslavsky.
Yeah, Mr. President, I have on the desk 3A, which is additional findings that we have developed in conjunction with the staff and the city attorney pursuant to the actions of the Planning Committee and in our office. So, and I would ask for an eye vote on 3A as well as on the granting of the appeal in general. I just want to say a word and I just have to say it for the record because I don't want the impression to be left that Mr. Resnick has told you the whole story. If you want to build a six-story building, then you ought to present the plans for a six-story building and not for a seven-story building. And for three years, you have been trying to ram through a seven-story building on that street where a six-story building is all that's allowed. And frankly, your client has been playing just as many games as you think we've been playing on that score. And when you do that kind of thing, you ought to be straightforward and honest about it. And unfortunately, our own staff, the city staff, has not been as with it as it should have been. And it wasn't until late yesterday that they came to the conclusion that, the same conclusion that members of our Design Review Board had come to some time ago, that this was not a six-story building, but a seven-story building. And what this suggests, Mr. Resnick, if I can take the liberty of addressing you directly, what this suggests is that this ought to go back to the Design Review Board from the start. You want to build a building on Wilshire and Malcolm, you go ahead and build it in accordance with the specifications of the plan. That Design Review Board has to observe every aspect of the Westwood Community Plan and all of the ordinances that are attendant thereto. And if they are looking at a seven-story building, they have an obligation, as do we, to disapprove it. And how can you look at a design of a building that is on its face a violation of the plan? And if it's a six-story versus a seven-story building, that's a substantial difference. It's a, what is it? A one-sixth increase in the height of a building. That does affect the design and the appreciation of a design review process of whether that building should be approved or not. And it will affect the side yards and it will affect the balconies and it will affect what the whole look is, guidelines or no guidelines. But you submitted a project that was patently on its face a violation of the plan and we're rejecting it. And if you want to take us, as you have threatened, to court, please do and I hope the judge will see it our way. You have two choices. You can challenge this in court or you can come back, submit it through the process, the Design Review Board, have it taken up. They have no desire, I know they have no desire, nor do we, to drag this out and get a resolution to this one way or the other. But the resolution should be both on our side and on your client's side, being honest and straightforward about what they're proposing. And one last comment. The fact that the Planning Commission approved this is not to be worn as a badge of honor. It should raise a question about why the Planning Commission didn't get to the bottom of this as, I'm sure they relied on the staff at the time that this came to them. I don't think they would have approved the building knowingly in violation of the plan either. But please, don't walk around this chamber wearing the Planning Commission's mistake as a badge of honor. They made a mistake. We're correcting that mistake. Go back to the Design Review Board. They will take it up expeditiously and you will have a resolution to this. And I ask for an eye vote on 3A and on the appeal with the findings, added findings on the file.
Is there any further discussion on this matter? If not, open the roll on Mr. Yaroslavsky's amendment. Close the roll.
Thirteen eyes.
That was approved. Now on the matter as amended. Open the roll. Close the roll.
Thirteen eyes.
That was approved. Next item.
On the continued agenda, item number 61 is a public hearing. It's a continued consideration of a communication from the chairperson of the Planning and Land Use Management Committee and a mitigative negative declaration relative to a track map appeal. And this was continued from yesterday. I believe there's a request to continue this one week.
What district is this?
Ms. Picas.
Mrs. Picas. Mr. Bernson, can you help us on this item?
Was this item 61?
Yes, on item 61.
There was a problem and it's been corrected and the corrected copy is on the file, so everything's fine on that.
Yeah, I moved the committee report.
It's all fine.
All right. Is there any discussion on this matter? And we have to have a public hearing on this, Mr. Clerk?
Yes.
On item 61, are there any cards? Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on item number 61? I see no one. Therefore, the public hearing is closed. Is there any discussion, members of the council? If not, open the roll on this matter. Close the roll.
Thirteen eyes.
That matter was approved. Next item.
Item number 62 are two committee reports on one file. Section A is continued consideration of a Planning and Land Use Management Committee report submitted without recommendation. And Part B is continued intergovernmental relations and Community Development and Housing Committee report and Yaroslavsky motion.
All right, Mr. Bernson?
Yes, the committee was sup-
Yes, the committee was split on this. Ms. Galanter and I were there. We did not have Mr. Holden present at the time. I have proposed position number one, which is to oppose AB 531, which is the Polanco bill regarding conformance of state law with the Federal Fair Housing Amendments Act of 1988, as its passage may weaken the city's authority over land use regulations. A related bill, SB 1234, by Calderon accomplishes the same thing but does not preempt local discretion on how such goals are achieved. And I believe our IGR committee has come up with a position in support of the Calderon bill, but in opposition to the Polanco bill, and I would move that we adopt position number 1A.
All right. Are you finished, Mr. Burnson?
Yes.
Ms. Galanter.
Mr. President, members, I obviously took the other position, consistent with the report also of the Community Redevelopment and Housing Committee report that urges support, and as I read this, IGR did also urge support of the Polanco bill. And so I will move it. No? That's what it says. It says, "Continue." Well, I'm only reading what it says on here. I wasn't at either of those committees. I was at the Planning and Land Use Management Committee, and what it says on here...
A1.
Yeah, A1 is Mr. Burnson's report. A2 is the recommendation that I submitted. So I'm going to move as a substitute the... I'm not sure which way to do this, and I don't think anybody from Housing and Community Development is paying any attention here. But I will move as a substitute the report of the Housing and Community Development Committee. And see if I can get a second.
Yes, Mrs. Walters?
I'm having apparently as much difficulty as Ms. Galanter in sorting through the report. Would you tell me what the recommendation of the housing committee is, please?
Well, I think we should ask a member of the housing committee to do that.
Yeah, I think we have somebody here.
We also have Mr. Bodakhan from the mayor's office is here, but is somebody from Housing and Community Development prepared to talk about this?
I think we ought to put this matter on the desk until we get the necessary staff here.
We also ought to have a report from Building and Safety.
Is there any objection to holding this matter on the desk?
Is it still my time? Why is everybody talking on my time, if it is still my time?
Mrs. Galanter, the floor is yours.
Perhaps it wasn't, in which case I apologize to everybody.
I had recognized Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Fine, go for it.
Thank you, Mr. President. We do have Mr. Bodakhan here from the mayor's office, who may be helpful in clarifying this, unless it's the wish of the chair to lay this on the table. If we can dispose of it, I would think we should do it now. Is that consistent with your...
Well, if we have the staff here, we may as well go forward.
I appreciate that. While I still have remaining time, Mr. Bodakhan, maybe you can help council members clarify that which is being requested here. It seems to be rather confused at this point.
I'll try to clarify. I confess that there has been some modification of the bills. The Assembly Bill 531, which is the Polanco bill, which I believe both the Community Development and Housing Committee and Ms. Galanter's committee supported, in effect restate existing state and federal law with respect to federal housing discrimination practice, which is to say that they put into effect what has determined the effects test and not the intent test in determining what is discriminatory under both federal and state law. It is explicitly stated in the statute. The Legislative Council of California has rendered an opinion which in fact states that it is nothing more in this area than a restatement of case law, U.S. Supreme Court and other federal case law and state law on this matter. The Calderon bill apparently attempts to do the same thing, but there are some differences in that the Calderon bill does not make this explicit specifically, and the Calderon bill has some other minor differences which I'm happy to go into if people want to get into that. The mayor's office supports Assembly Bill 531, as housing coordinator, I support it. Mr. Karsh is here from the CLA's office, and I'm sure he also knows the specific provisions of the bill.
What the hell is this on here, though?
Mr. Ridley Thomas, it's still your time.
Well, I'm more than willing to hear from the CLA at this point, Mr. President.
All right, Mr. CLA.
The consideration of a city position on the Polanco bill began with the Affordable Housing Commission's recommendation to support it last year. This was considered in the Intergovernmental Relations Committee early this year. That committee recommended support of the Polanco bill. That recommendation then went to the Housing Committee, which did not make a recommendation, but instead referred the matter to the Planning and Land Use Management Committee. From that committee came the split recommendation that is before you. In preparing the report to the IGR committee, my office recommended that we support the Calderon bill and take no position on the Polanco bill.
Mr. President, members of the council, having heard the presentation from Mr. Bodakhan and Mr. Karsh, I would urge an "I" vote, that is, to support A 53, that's the Polanco bill. It's a stronger way of getting at the issues as they are presented before us, and again, I would simply support an "I" vote, urge an "I" vote.
Which one is the Polanco bill? Is that what Mrs. Galanter is asking, or Mr. Burnson?
Yes, precisely. I'm supporting Mrs. Galanter's motion.
Assembly Bill 33. Mrs. Walters.
Well, I needed the clarification that has been provided, and I would support Ms. Galanter and provide a second if that was necessary.
Mr. Bernardi.
Michael, would you clarify what the IGR committee's recommendation was in this?
The Intergovernmental Committee recommended support of the Polanco bill in accordance with the Affordable Housing Commission's recommendation and presentation by John Huerta when he spoke before IGR committee.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes, I also rise in support of AB 531. I understand that our concern about preempting local control over the occupancy standards and so forth, but I think a lot of thought has been going into the process. But I did want to ask if I could get a clear understanding of Section B, the motion introduced by Zeb and Alatori, if one of them could explain to me exactly what their motion does on this item? Zeb?
I don't have it in front of me.
You have a motion? Or Richard? So I rise in support, I just don't understand that second paragraph. Richard? Does anybody know about that one?
There's an anonymous maker of the motion, Mr....
Right. See, my understanding is it might basically separate the anti-discrimination clauses and refers to the issue of occupancy standards, but I just want to know if I could get some clear explanation. Do you know, Mike?
Well, I can tell you that the occupancy standards have been deleted from Assembly Bill 531, and it specifically states that in Section E, that nothing in this part limits the applicability of any reasonable local restrictions that pertain to the maximum number of occupants permitted to occupy a dwelling that were enacted pursuant to Section 17958 of the Health and Safety Code. So that provision, which once was in the bill, has been modified.
So your recommendation is that we also include the motion by Zeb and Alatori?
I'm not familiar with the motion, but I'm...
What's the effects test? It's not about the effects test. What is that?
Maybe the city attorney should address that question.
Mr. President.
Just a moment. It's now, Mr. Burnson?
I just want to make an announcement or introduction when you permit. They've been waiting a while.
I think he wants to make an introduction.
All right, I'll recognize Mr. Ridley Thomas for a brief introduction.
I appreciate it, Mr. President, and while we work our way through this maze, I take this opportunity to introduce students from Locke High School, 35 students, grades nine through 12. They're here with their teachers, Mr. Carvajalas and Ms. Brenda Kutcher. Won't you stand so we can recognize you? Give them a hand, please. Thank you very kindly.
The chair recognizes Councilman Holden for a brief introduction.
No, these are presentations, Mr. President, so you want to finish this item, then come back to it.
Well, all right, we'll finish this item.
Members of the council, I think that before we rush to judgment here between these two bills, we ought to understand the difference between them and what Polanco requires local government to do. I think that we need somebody here from Building and Safety and from the Planning Department, not just the Housing Department, to tell us really the difference. My understanding is, and perhaps, Michael, you can tell us, the question is the difference between intent and effect. Is that correct? Just briefly, yes or no, or, you know, and then let me go on my next question.
That's one of the four points.
Okay, now what is the difference between the Polanco bill and the other piece of legislation? The Calderon bill?
The Calderon bill does not get into that issue. The Polanco bill does say that you will use the most protective test for proving discrimination.
What is that test?
Which is the effects. If the effect is that in the market area around, let's take an apartment building, the mix of ethnic minorities, or whatever groups you want to talk about, are such that there should be some of those people renting or being able to rent in that apartment building, and there are none there, then the effects test would say there is discrimination. The burden then shifts to the defendant to prove their innocence.
Where does the burden of proof lie then? In other words, you're saying, what if nobody's applied to rent there? Does that make that individual guilty because there isn't a presence of somebody in that location? Is that what you're saying?
Well, I'm not an attorney, as I understand, the burden is on the landlord to prove that...
To prove that he's innocent.
Yes.
To prove he's innocent. Remember, now, just as, I didn't ask you, I'm sorry, just a moment, Mr. Bodakhan. Now, you know, it seems to me that this flies in the face of everything that is part of our jurisprudence system. Somebody is innocent until proven guilty. They're not guilty until proven innocent. This isn't a totalitarian country yet. It may be getting that way. Unfortunately, that's what you're doing. Now, you know, I'm as interested in fighting discrimination as any of you, but in doing that, you don't take away people's rights. And that's what I'm afraid this bill does. I'm afraid it goes a little too far. Now, the Calderon bill provides for protection against discrimination also. The question is that you're innocent until proven guilty, not guilty until proven innocent. And before you vote on this thing, you better talk to people in Building and Safety and in the Planning Department and find out how you're going to enforce this. I mean, you know, this is really, I mean, this may sound innocuous, but you really need to find out the position you're taking, whether this is going to be something that is really enforceable, and is it going to be fair when it's done? What are the effects going to be? You know, it's easy to say, yes, I'm against discrimination, yes, I'm for the flag and apple pie, but if you're doing something that's going to have a harmful effect in another direction, you need to think about it. So I would suggest that, we have somebody from Building and Safety here, and if we don't, I would like to suggest that we hold this on the desk and get some people down who are going to tell us how this is going to be enforced, what the effects are going to be of it.
Ms. Galanter.
I'm hoping that I can help clarify some of the questions about what is and isn't on the agenda. We're looking at Items A, which, Item A has a 1 and a 2, and Item B has two separate paragraphs. Item B, the second paragraph, the bill has actually been changed since this motion was taken, so that paragraph is no longer relevant to the bill because the bill's already been changed. It's the fourth paragraph, it's the second paragraph under B.
That's no longer relevant?
That's no longer relevant because the bill has been changed. That's what Mr. Bodakhan just said. So the first paragraph under B and Item 2 under A say the same thing, which is support AB 531. The first paragraph under Item A, Mr. Burnson's position says, "Don't support AB 531. Instead, support SB 1234." Now, I hope that that helps. I would like to point out also that the bill may still be changed, and we cannot realistically answer how things are going to be enforced at a local level until we see a final bill. So we will be dealing, we are dealing at this point in any case in hypotheticals. It seems to me perfectly prudent... Mr. Burnson, I wasn't aware you were a constitutional lawyer, or that it was your time. The issue is, are we going to support 531 as it stands now or not? And if we're not going to support it, if we determine that we're not going to support 531, then there's a question of whether we want to support AB 1234 instead.
Mr. Holden.
Where is AB 531 right now in the legislative process? Don't, you've got to go, Mike.
AB 531 is in the Senate Judiciary Committee. It has passed the Assembly on a vote of 41 to 34.
No, no, it passed the Assembly on 41 votes?
41 to 34.
After amended or prior to the amendment?
That was as amended.
As amended?
Yes, it was amended on January, well, the major amendment was July 12 of last year, but it was amended again the day before the Assembly voted on it.
What about the Calderon bill? Where's that?
That's in Assembly Housing Committee.
Oh, so they're killing it over there, huh? No, it's the Senate, okay, so it's already moved out.
Yeah, both bills have...
What was the, out of House of Origin, what is the vote in the Senate for the Calderon bill?
The Senate floor vote last summer was 28 to 0.
28 to zip. So it looks like you're going to have the Calderon bill or no bill. And you have a war between the two houses up there on who's going to be author of legislation to make these major changes. So you can talk all you want around this circle, but it's going to be the Calderon bill or no bill. So you're going to have something or nothing. So I bet, you know, if you want some changes, you have to go with the Calderon bill. If you want nothing, go with the Polanco bill. Looks like that's what you're going to get.
Mrs. Flores.
This gets more confusing the more that we talk. Is what Nate said about Calderon bill, do you think that's fact? Is that what's before the legislature now?
I'm not familiar with the procedures. I think the CLA is probably better.
Well, I didn't ask you. I mean, I asked anyone who knew about it. Do you have the answer to that, Michael?
No, each house has passed its version of the bill. It's possible that the Polanco bill, according to the author, he is pursuing the bill. According to the Speaker of the Assembly, who has just introduced a new civil rights bill, he has incorporated all of Polanco's bill into his bill, and he is going to try and push that one through.
Well, just in case this gets through, can you tell me what familial status? What does that mean? What does that incorporate?
Familial status refers to a parent with children.
And disability means people with disabilities?
Yes, it's in reference to the American Disabilities Act.
Okay, and you told me that still in the bill is the section that nothing in this part limits the applicability of any reasonable local restrictions that pertain to the maximum number of occupants permitted to occupy a dwelling and that were enacted pursuant to sections such and such under the Health and Business Code. That is still in it?
Yes.
Okay.
Ms. Galanter. Mr. Hernandez.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. Members of the council, again, I think this is, it is complicated because we are talking about housing, and it is complicated because we are talking about people's rights to live in that housing. I do know Mr. Burnson's statements are... I do know Mr. Burnson's statements are important because we don't want to have any discrimination and we don't want to prosecute people who are innocent, but that's my understanding why we have courts. It's also my understanding that it's going to be going through a legislative process to pass, and so I don't believe that argument has a lot of strength right now. What I do believe has a lot of strength is what's happening in communities and in cities throughout the state when you have many people without enough housing. And I do know what is happening in my district when I have the numbers of people living in some of these small apartment units. I think landlords are looking for some kind of relief. I think that the Polanco bill is trying to give some kind of a solution so that we could spread it out a little bit more. But more important, the concept of discrimination in a city whose majority is minority cannot be something we support. And so, I again urge my colleagues to support the Polanco bill. I think it's headed in a positive direction, and I know we'll have to make adjustments, but it's no different than any other legislation we've had to deal with. Thank you.
Mr. Holden.
Mr. President, I think Ms. Flores asked a question whether or not the Polanco bill would preempt local government as to how we conduct our business relating to housing. I remember we adopted an ordinance that says that you have a number, fixed number of children in a given family, and if you, if you get more children, they can raise the rent. Now, I think this would preempt us, except for the fact that maybe the Polanco bill is not saying you have to evict them or you cannot move them in, but I think there's a fine line there which is raised by Mr. Burnson. And I think you better look very closely at the Rent Stabilization Board and how they make those adjustments and increase in rents based on the ordinance that you already adopted. And you could very well be preempted. Someone could go to court and say, "No, the state is not involved in this whole decision-making process as relates to raising rents under certain conditions, and therefore you preempted by the state." None of the state can decide whether or not the rent should be raised or lowered based on the number of occupancy of a certain apartment building. And for that reason, since there's no clarification, it is not clear that, you better be careful how you, you support these two pieces of legislation. I think you are being preempted because the state is not involved in that section of the law. I think so. So, there's no way I could vote for the Polanco bill now until I hear clarification, at least a legislative opinion, council opinion, or opinion from the city attorney. It's not his area. Mr. City Attorney, you want to respond to that? Are you familiar with the state?
I'm not familiar with the bill.
That's right, so he's not prepared to respond to that right now? I just think it's a real problem. Maybe you can, go ahead.
I'm prepared to respond. The bill specifically says that it will not limit local laws, reasonable local laws that limit...
It will not limit what, reasonable?
It will not limit...
Reasonable.
Reasonable local restrictions that pertain...
What is defined reasonable?
Well, I think the rent stabilization...
Then it's not clear, no.
No, it is clear, I believe.
No, it's not clear. I have to vote no.
Mr. Burnson.
Let me ask Mr. Karch, how is this going to be enforced? Who's going to enforce this?
This would be enforceable through the State Housing and Community Development Department. It could also be enforced by an action by District Attorney, I presume. Fair Housing and Employment.
Are they going to inspect the units? Are they going to go around and count people and the buildings? What are they going to do? How is this going to be enforced?
It would presumably be done by local enforcement if that's fail, if that fails.
Is that Building and Safety?
It might be, I don't know.
Well, then it's going to be done by complaint, and I'm sorry, Mr. Hernandez, that you're taking the position that somebody who opposes this bill is against discrimination, because that's not the case. The question is, you said it's a matter for the courts. In this country, you're still innocent until you're proven guilty. And that's the difference between these two bills. That's the only difference between these two bills. And I think you should understand that. The difference is, are you innocent until you're proven guilty or are you guilty until you're proven innocent? So, if you want to be, have people be proven guilty until they're proven innocent, then you vote for the Polanco bill. If you want to have people be innocent until proven guilty, then you support the Calderon bill. But as Mr. Holden has mentioned, all of this may be moot because if the Speaker has incorporated all of this into his own legislation, that'll probably be the one that flies. But in any case, you should know that the main difference you're voting on in this case is innocent until proven guilty or guilty until proven innocent.
Mr. Alatari.
I'd move the previous question.
Open the roll on the previous question. Close the roll.
Twelve eyes, one no.
That was approved. Now, we have Mrs. Galanter's substitute motion. Open the roll on Mrs. Galanter's substitute motion.
You better vote...
Close the roll.
Ten eyes, three no's.
That was approved. Now, do we have to have another roll call on the motion itself?
Yes, that was voting on whether to substitute.
Alright. Now, open the roll on the substitute. Close the roll.
Twelve eyes, one no.
That was approved. And we're going to receive and file Mr. Yarosovsky's motion. Now, I recognize Mr. Holden. Mr. Holden, please make it brief. We have a very long agenda.
Okay, in that case, we won't let Raymond take your picture anymore. Mr. President, members of the council, I'm very, very pleased to welcome Charnock Elementary School, grades, second and third grade, and the teacher is Ms. Estelle Felber and Mrs. Bay. Mrs. Felber is the mother-in-law of Raymond, our photographer. Let's give them a big hand and welcome them to the city of Los Angeles City Chambers. You can see that your money is working for you sometimes. And I want to bring forward, Mr. President, Ms. Estelle Etienne. Did I get it right? No, 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 Estelle. And, is that you? Come on up here. Please welcome, I'm sorry, Madame Catherine Etienne. Etienne, Etienne. It's French. Ms. Etienne, who recently celebrated her 90th birthday, is a ballet teacher whom on special occasions still performs. I would like the City Council to join me in commending her for her longevity and her dedication to the students she has trained over the years. She's a special person deserving of this recognition from the City Council. It's indeed my pleasure to present commendations to her.
I'm very proud, very proud of everyone here today, and I'm very proud of Estelle to help me to do this. I belong to the Charisse family. You all know, she's Charisse. She's my sister-in-law. She married my brother. When he passed away, she married Tony Martin. And I'm a president of the Easter Sunrise Guild of the Hollywood Bowl for 45 years, and I really helped, especially last year. I gave every penny I had to help the Sunrise's because I just love it. And God bless you all, and thank you very much. I'm very proud for this. Thank you, God bless.
Okay. Yeah, just a minute. Also, I'd like to, Mrs. Estelle France will accept for Mr. and Mrs. Crouch and Bea, Bea Byer. They are receiving commendation as well. Please welcome, they're not here yet, founder of the Trinity Broadcasting Network and Bea, Bea Byer, and that's Paul Crouch, President of the Trinity Broadcasting Network. Through the efforts of Mr. and Mrs. Crouch and Mrs. Bayer, we are able to attend and view on television the annual Hollywood Bowl Easter Sunday services. Their free service is a nonprofit production and is completely dependent upon volunteer support. I commend their efforts for continuing to bring hundreds of people together each year to celebrate the Easter. So, it's indeed my pleasure to present this...
Thank you, Councilman.
Just a minute, just a minute. Will you want to say a few words?
This is a tradition that has gone on for 72 years in the city of Los Angeles, and the Bowl was built to put on the Easter Sunrise services. And it's this Sunday, and you're all welcome, there's no charge. You have a tremendous entertainment and spiritual food, and we do appreciate this. These resolutions will be read at the Easter Sunrise services. We had invited Councilman Holden to be there, but he couldn't, and the others are so busy, they couldn't be down here today. But I have a poem that you will get a copy of if you want, which sort of talks about the spirit of Easter, and it's called "Transformation." "As Christ did fearlessly face the cross, knowing that death was the beginning of a newer order of life, having had the working kinship with diviner power, he but closed his eyes to the vistas of earth to open them to heights of transformation. So, each man is nailed upon his cross and does transcend the pain, knowing in the victory a taste of joy that earthly knowledge cannot reckon with. Far in the break with the apparent day, the heights ascended have brought new views, a scene, the scene, a forecast of things to come, so he can face each despair with faith renewed." And we have copies in Councilman Holden's office for anyone that wants them and wants to give them out to their friends. It is a message we all have that we may overcome our helplessness and hopelessness with love. And thank you for this opportunity to address you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
63 is a closed session.
Let's go through all the calendar first.
Mr. President, 63C can be taken off calendar, that's a to it.
Let's just go through the calendar.
On the regular agenda, item number four is a Planning and Land Use Management Committee Report, mitigated negative declaration and ordinance first reading.
Is there, is this matter called special? If not, open the roll. Close the roll.
Eleven eyes.
That was approved. Next item.
Okay, we'll hold the ordinance over. We need 12 votes for the ordinance.
We'll hold it over one week. Next item.
Items five through 14 are REAP resolutions.
Are there any specials on these items? If not, open the roll. Close the roll.
Eleven eyes.
Those are approved. Next item.
Items 15 through 20 are Budget and Finance Committee reports.
Are there any specials on these items? I have heard none so far. Open the roll on these items. Close the roll.
Eleven eyes.
Those are approved. Next.
Item number 21 is a communication from the chairperson of the Community Economic and Development Committee.
We'll call that special. Next item.
Item 22 is a City Engineer and Bureau of Sanitation Joint Report and Categorical Exemption. Motion required.
Is there going to be any discussion on this item? If not, open the roll. Close the roll.
Ten eyes.
That was approved. Next item.
Items 23 through 31 are Roll 16 motions, categorical exemption, number 29, 10 votes to consider.
Open the roll on consideration. Close the roll.
Ten eyes.
Consideration is approved. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to speak on this item? Public hearing is closed. Are any of these items called special? Which items, Mr. Clerk?
23 through 31.
Call item 30 special. Any other items? If not, open the roll on these items. 23 to 30. Close the roll.
Ten eyes.
Those are approved. Next item. Next item.
Apparently, we have a card on item 13 who would like to speak. Do we want to reconsider that and call that special?
We'll reconsider and call item 13 special. Next item.
Okay, 32 is a closed session, we'll hold that on the desk. On the supplemental agenda, items 34 through 35 are Community and Economic Development Committee reports.
Any of these items to be called special? I can't hear you, Mrs. Flores.
That's because my mic wasn't on. Yes, I would like to call item 34 special just for the purpose of receiving and filing it. So, I move that 34 be received and filed.
Alright. Open the roll on these items. Close the roll.
Ten eyes.
Those are approved. Next item.
Item number 36 is the Intergovernmental Relations Committee Report. And I'll need a motion because I only have one signature on the committee report.
We'll call that special. Next item.
Item number 39 is Intergovernmental Relations Committee Report, submitted without recommendation. Motion required, 10 votes to consider.
We'll call that special. Next item.
37 and 38 are committee reports.
Is there any specials on these items? If not, open the roll. Close the roll.
Eleven eyes.
Those are approved. Next item.
Item number 40 is a communication from the chairperson of the Community Economic and Development Committee. It's submitted without recommendation. Motion required, 10 votes to consider.
We'll call that special also. Next item.
Items 41 through 48 are Roll 16 motions. There's a categorical exemption on 42, 10 votes to consider.
Open the roll on consideration of these items. Close the roll.
Eleven eyes.
Those items are considered. Is there any public comment on any of these items? I hear none, the public comments are closed. Are any of these items special? If not, open the roll. Close the roll.
Eleven eyes.
Those are approved. Next item.
Item number 49 is a Roll 16 resolution, 10 votes to consider.
Open the roll on consideration. Close the roll.
Eleven eyes.
Now, that is approved. Is there any public comment on that item? I hear none. Is there, is any discussion on this item? If not, open the roll. Close the roll.
Eleven eyes.
Now, that was approved. Next item.
Item 30 was called special by Ms. Picas.
Members of the council, you will recall that we have very important executive session items that we deferred from yesterday. In addition, we have others today. These are very pressing. So, I'm going to put the council in executive session so that we can devote our energies to these critical items. And then we will come back in session and finish up the agenda. I trust that's agreeable to everyone. If not, now's the time to speak. I hear no objection. We will go into executive session then, and the sergeant will clear the room.
We only have nine. We will wait for Mr. Brody to return.
Yeah, they'll have it. They'll approve the settlement agreement and authorize you to sign it. This is on... this is on the file. This settlement agreement is on the file, I presume?
All right, we have a quorum now. There's been a coup d'etat. You can go sit in the horseshoe. We want to finish before... in this century, Mr. Brody. All right, Mr. Clerk.
63A.
63A.
63A is one we just discussed in closed session. The recommended action is that the council approve the proposed settlement agreement and authorize Mr. Pritzker from the city attorney's office to sign it on behalf of the city.
Unanimous... second.
Roll.
Ten eyes.
That was approved. Next item.
Okay, it's 32A. That is the putting up the cash deposit in the case of Henry Bradford versus City of Los Angeles, and in that case, it would be a transfer of $830,000 to cover the security that has to be filed with the court to guarantee satisfaction of judgment in case the city is unsuccessful on appeal.
This is the recommendation of the committee.
Yes, this is A.
Open the roll. Mrs. Walters?
Is this the Gomez case? Which case is this?
No, this is Bradford. This is the... A. This is 32A.
Open the roll. Close the roll.
Ten eyes.
That was approved.
Next case, 32B, Mamie Williams versus City of LA. This is a case where Mrs. Walters wanted to divide the question because it's a case involving punitive damages against the individual police officer.
That's correct. Could we vote on the punitive damages question first, please?
Is there any objection to dividing the question?
There's no objection.
There's no objection. Open the roll on the... what is the first issue, Mr. Attorney?
The first issue is whether or not the city wants to appropriate the money to pay the punitive damages, which is $79,500 plus interest.
And I would urge a no vote.
Open the roll on that item. Close the roll.
Nine eyes, one no.
That was approved. Next item.
And in that case, then the next action would be then to vote on the appropriation for the balance, and the total would be $212,000, $218... $212,000, $218,240.
Open the roll. Close the roll.
Ten eyes.
That was approved. Next item.
Next case is Gary Lee Anthony versus City of Los Angeles, and this is an appropriation of $17,412.54.
Open the roll. Close the roll.
Ten eyes.
That was approved.
32D is Gary Marshall versus City of Los Angeles, and there is an appropriation of $275,000 involved.
Open the roll. Close the roll.
Ten eyes.
That was approved. Next item.
32E, McQuell Mercado and Mario Rodriguez versus Officer Calhoun et al., and it involves an appropriation of $160,000.
Open the roll. Close the roll.
Ten eyes.
That was approved. Next item.
32F, Munoz versus City of Los Angeles. An appropriation of $105,000 is required in settlement of the case.
Open the roll. Close the roll.
Ten eyes.
That was approved.
32G is Bradley Johnson versus City of LA and Officer Stephen Muldorfer. It's a settlement of the case and requires an appropriation of $80,000.
Open the roll. Close the roll.
Ten eyes.
Next case is 32H. It's Richard Cathy versus City of LA, and it's a transfer of $45,000 in settlement of the case.
Open the roll. Close the roll.
Ten eyes.
Last case is 32I, Diane Elizabeth Ochoa versus City of LA. Settlement of the case and it requires an appropriation of $30,000.
Open the roll. Close the roll.
Ten eyes.
Those are approved. For the benefit of the television audience, I'd like to announce that all those items were discussed at great length in executive session by the council, and that's why... but the actual action had to be taken in open session.
Have we done the Gomez... have we done the Gomez case?
No, we still have to... no, the Gomez case was strictly a finding in closed session.
What remains on the desk now?
Okay, items 13, 21, 30, 34, 36, 39, 40, 63, C and D will be continued to Tuesday, April 21st.
Open the roll. Close the roll.
Ten eyes.
Those items will be continued until Tuesday. What remains on the desk, Mr. Clerk?
Public testimony and non-agenda items.
Mrs. Picas.
Yes. Mr. President, members of the council, I'd like to announce that the Human Resources and Labor Relations Committee, which was scheduled to meet at 2, will meet in Room 238 immediately after the council. We will condense the agenda, and it should be a very brief meeting.
All right. This is the time for public comment. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to make comment? Please proceed, Mr. Robinson.
Mr. President, members of council, the stupid manner in which the Los Angeles Times, the Downtown News, and the news source attack those it does not agree with is like the pseudo-journalism of the National Enquirer. Mr. Lindsey's private life is not the business of reporters. Their politically motivated and ignorantly racist muckraking is denigrating. Thank you.
Is there anything else, Mr. Clerk?
We have motions for posting and referral.
So ordered.
Councilmember Ferraro requests to be excused today for personal business meets council policy.
Unanimous vote.
That clears the desk, Mr. President.
All right, are there any adjourning motions? Mrs. Picas, would the audience please rise?
I ask that the council adjourn in memory of Rosemary S.J. Schreier. She was the chancellor of the University of California Riverside, one of the first women to serve as chancellor of the University of California.
I'd like to second that.
Yeah, put me on that also.
She died right before she was going to retire.
Yeah. That's very sad.
Why don't we put everybody on that?
Right.
All right, all councilpersons. Any elders? Call the roll, Mr. Clerk.
Yeah, I suffered a very serious stroke. Yeah, really sad.
Counsel is adjourned.